Adds the word agriculture because that's can be broader than what most people think of as traditional farms. It adds to the section that requires a bona fide farm plan. It adds the special exception or criteria B in that section to be required as well as A. We read this to include A and B already, but I think this adds the clarity and makes sure that there's no room for argument, that somebody doesn't have to meet both sections that were in the ordinance. The next one is very similar. It carries through that section B two into needing to continue to meet it, to continue to reside in the dwelling that was permitted as meeting that. So somebody couldn't meet it on day one and then stop doing what they're doing and then not have any requirement to continue to meet that. Number five clarifies that frontage is only along a publicly accepted street. Our definition of frontage, I think, allowed for that to be the case anyways, but this makes it explicit in the agriculture section. Number six, there's a section in the proposal B that passed that says that the new dwelling needs to be in the front 30 percent of the lot depth. This proposed or 400 feet, whichever is less, so that in those really deep lots where 30 percent of the lot depth is deeper than 400 feet, that the house would still have to be located in that front 400 feet. The planning board recommended that you not adopt this change, that we leave it as is in proposal B. The seventh one added some other agricultural or forestry operations to include firewood processing and Christmas tree cultivation to the uses that would allow a house accessory to it. Number eight doesn't show as a change, so what we realized happened at the planning board meeting at that time is we had started with a draft of the agricultural zone. The council had since amended the ordinance with a planning board recommendation to allow for conservation cemeteries on lots as small as 10 acres. But the planning board correctly pointed out that that was not in the draft that they were working from. We corrected it to match the adopted ordinance and that's not something that has to be changed. That's already been properly adopted by council. What our plan is, is to bring these back to you for a public hearing and first reading on September 5th and a second reading at the second meeting in September. Any questions or concerns about these first? Pete?
Can you go back number four, please? So if I correctly understand this, we're going to make a put in ordinance that if a dwelling that exists for on a farm, if it stops being a farm, what are we going to do?
That they would either have to show that it was beyond their control and then they would have an exception to continue using the house, or you know, if they just intentionally built the house without planning to follow through with their plans, then they wouldn't be able to occupy that house. That's the way it was in the previous ordinance is in the current, and this clarifies that. But that was something that the planning board wanted to be extra clear in the ordinance. It is? It's a strict standard.
Or what?
Legally, we can't kick anyone out of their house, correct?
Yeah, are we going to bulldoze it?
We haven't, we haven't, and we could've.
We could have in one or two instances.
But we chose not to. So the precedence has already been set that the city is not enforcing current ordinances that stipulate this very same thing as point four.
We haven't gone to the point of removing somebody. We've worked with them to explain why they're no longer following through with the plans that allowed the house in the first place and then sought an exception from planning board that it was not an intentional workaround to not meet the ordinance. But it is a strict standard.
But it says on here, "In order for a dwelling to continue existing."
That it needs to continue to be a farm. Yep.
Or we're going to bulldoze it?
The only way, we can go to the ordinance section, or you can go to the planning board and explain that it was something beyond your control. Could be old age, could be injury, could be economic circumstances and get an exception.
So I am 100% against number four.
Yep.
That is totally unenforceable. It's, there's, that's a, there's no point.
Yep, and that's the way our ordinance has been with the income requirement for decades.
Exactly, and we got rid of them. So I'm 100% against number four.
Belinda?
Thank you. I'm not totally against, I'm still thinking it out, but I'm glad you sort of clarified it. If a farm has been existence for 10, 20, 15, whatever number of years, people raised their families there, and if, like you said, for old, they can't farm because they're seniors now.
That would be a perfect reason.
So then they can have an exception and be able not to be forced out of their house.
Correct.
But the exception has to be granted by the planning board, which is appointed, correct?
Yep.
The planning board approves it. So here's my thing. I always, I always worry about intent execution, and when you have a body of individuals making a specific change about a specific individual with the ability to, that has consequences of living in their home or not living in their home, that to me, that's problematic. A, it's worrisome, but you know, I'd like to propose, and if I could, just to give you something, a third thing to think about. I was always told, just probably a poor analogy, but once you buy a home, don't do anything with your yard for a year. Live in it, watch it, see what happens, think about it, and then make some decisions. This has, and we just did this, and we'll talk about it in the next workshop in 4.2B. It's been about a year, and there's some adjustments that want to be made by the planning board and staff. I'd recommend that we take everything here and kind of push this off table, if you would, out to probably May or June of next year. Because, and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, have we had anybody pull a building permit yet in the ag zone?
Not, not yet. We are working with a couple of people that we've been working with since before the changes that would have met the old standard or the new.
And by not accepting any of these changes, could anything catastrophic happen to the entire 20,000 acres that's been, you know, changed with zoning?
I think that some of the clarities help ensure that the farm plan needs to be, meet all of the standards that have been adopted. I don't think it's catastrophic, but I do think that they add clarity to the ordinance changes.
And for the city council to contemplate, I think, you know, pushing this off till May or June of next year and then looking at all the real world examples of what happens, if any, over the course of that time in the agricultural resource protection zone, and then coming up and without the fatigue, and residents have fatigue, council has fatigue, planning board has fatigue on this issue. Another, a year for everything to percolate, for things to be thought with cooler heads, I think might make a lot of sense in this situation, as it did with 4.2.
I just, all of this is micromanagement. We're trying to put the income standard back in through making it administratively impossible to do anything. Or we're going to put up these threats that say, if someone with very good intentions, business is hard, farming is hard, someone with very good intentions could start a farm, a young couple could have all of the best intentions. This number four implies that they're doing it, that where people are doing it for underhand. We're going to catch people that are just trying to build a house and then not, it's, it's terrible policy for the city. It is the absolute, it's, it's horrible. It's absolutely my...
I disagree. I think we're imputing on city staff things that they would not do, and I'm thinking in terms of, you know, a farmer who has hay fields for years and gets old, they're not leaving that hay field unhayed. There's a shortage of hay this year in particular because of all the rain. They're going to contract with somebody else and it will still be farmed. I can't imagine Eric or code enforcement chasing somebody who is contracting the farming activity, you know, when it's continuing to be farmed and the person that's not farming it, living in that home is disabled or whatever.
This ordinance gives the, a city person the authority to kick someone out of their house, saying, it gives them the authority. I'm not comfortable doing that.
So without debating each individual item, because we could, that's actually, you know, it's good to work that out. If we have solutions to that, great. Let's start off at the top and we can have some more questions. Does the council want to pursue this and take action on these recommended, whether it be up or down, in September? Does council want to or not want to?
We weren't given a date certain, but I think it has to come before you for a vote so you can take some action on it.
Right, I mean, is this...
We can, no, yeah, we can work through it.
Is it to go through it or to ask questions and to...
You can do anything you want, except obviously debating whether or not, you know, this has to pass or not, but you can ask questions, you can go through each point, do whatever you want. I mean, I'm just trying to help facilitate that.
Well, I'd like to, they're not up there anymore.
Excuse me, may I please finish? Thank you kindly. Back on that four, I don't think it should be the planning board to decide the merits of somebody, whether they should be able to stay or not. I'm a, well, I'm like the good milk, so I'm not sure about putting people out or demolishing their house, but if a decision's going to be made on any of this, it should fall back on us. We do tax abatements, it comes to us. We don't let the assessor's office or the tax office or anybody else do it. We decide on the merits of the case. So if anything, I would like to see that changed for it to come back to us.
So could I just, my understanding of number four, and I'd look to Eric on this one, but my understanding is from what I've watched of the planning board meeting, it sounded as though they were acknowledging that we made some changes to the ag zone without anything in the ordinance that enforces what the ordinance says, and this was their attempt at doing that. Is that right, Eric?
Yeah, that there was a concern that somebody could permit a house in accordance with these standards and then stop using it, stop using it in the way that they promised to in order to build the house. You could argue about whether or not that's the case, the way that it's written now, but this makes it explicit that they need to continue to meet the requirements of an allowed use farm plan or recreational or natural use.
Or else.
Eric, on section six, slightly different, what was the planning board's recommendation on the 400 feet, whichever is less?
So they recommended not adding that or 400 feet, whichever is less. Just leave it as the 30% that's already in there.
I mean, it makes it into a strip zone at that point.
Yeah, the houses would be located close to the street.
So the 400 or less is gone?
The planning board recommends that you not adopt that number six change.
That was going to be my question on six, what was the rationale at the, did they give a rationale for that?
Yeah, so there were members of the public that spoke at that meeting about a farm, they have an existing farm, they're looking to establish a farm on another parcel that's, I think it's, it's a very wide lot with a lot of frontage, but it's not very deep. So even the 30% is going to be challenging for them, and they were, I think, it rung true as a real farm operation, and it was logical that they wanted to be able to cite their barns, farm stand, animal handling areas, trailers and trucks near the road to interact with customers and have that commercial farm operation, and then have their house set back a bit further so that they have privacy separate from the commercial farm. And that made sense in that situation.
Anything else, girls?
Yeah, I just want to say that I would hate us to move this off for another six months or a year. Most all of us understand exactly where we are, what we've been through, how much we've done in the past two years to try to get to where we are. So I don't want to move it that far away, and I totally disagree with number four. And these things were the ones that came in the very last minute of the hour, which if the chair would have been really smart that day, she would have said, "We will not deal with them to start with."
Okay.
I'd like to just make sure I understand number seven. So if I had a 10 acre wooded lot, I can, and I want to do a farm, I can open a two acre part of that and build a house and harvest firewood if I wanted to.
Correct, yep.
Or I could not, and cut the whole thing down.
You could, this was clarifying that...
But I can't not do a farm and build a house on 10 acres. Is that correct? That's how this ordinance...
A far more natural resource based use or recreational use.
So we can cut down a 10 acre lot, that's not a problem, to harvest firewood?
You can harvest firewood.
Right, but you can't build a house on 10 acres.
Well, I think the intent of the ordinance is...
Is that right? I got that right, Leroy, right? Okay, all right.
My understanding was the intent was to still have a connection to the use of the land that isn't allowed use in the zone.
I understand the point, that we're doing, I just want to point out what the reality is about all of these amendments and this, the way this is, it's micromanagement, for the sake of micromanagement, to hang on to this idea that we want to have an income standard in the ag zone, and we don't want to deal with the reality of what the ag zone is, is that if we want to try and protect land, but you can, you can harvest 10 acres and cut every tree down and sell it for firewood, and that's allowed, but you can't build a house with low impact, with low impact design and a state of the art septic system in the ag zone. To me, that's absurd.
This is one of the reasons I kind of wanted this to percolate, but Leroy's got a great point, too. We understand this issue. I got a question, and I, a question about working with the, within the comp plan. Point five, along a publicly accepted street, we're talking about the word frontage. Scouted throughout and, you know, actually Dana, you might know some of the answer to this, we talked about shared driveways and shared frontage on roads. And the ag zone, if you look historically in a current ordinance, it really does promote farm labor housing, and we're trying to promote multiple generations living on the same parcel or small splits, but that's extremely limited and way prescriptive by saying it has to be along a publicly accepted street because our comp zone specifically talks about a private way or a shared driveway, one of the two, call it whatever you want, but a non-city street in order so that you can actually protect some of that view shed along the roads. I don't know if you want to add to it, but to me, this is, again, it's, you're trying to create a strip or a strip didn't exist, and if that was the case, the planning board should have four months ago said, "Well, we'll just strip it all," because this is what they're doing. So I'm finding some conflict with the comprehensive plan on point five.
We did have quite a bit of discussion during the comp plan committee about potentially allowing bonuses to, I think we called them bonus, but I think it's, what we're really getting at is if you share a driveway with another lot, then potentially what you could have is an easier way to build a house. So you could talk about reduced road frontage. Now, in ordinance as it is, I don't think that that's addressed, so I think that might be something that we would need to discuss as a council, right, to make a, to a change. I don't think that it would necessarily apply to one specific zone. It might be something that you could apply across multiple zones or, I don't know, pick something. But yeah, you're right. I mean, we did talk about that quite a bit. I just don't know that it applies in this, the way everything currently is.
Yeah, and I don't know if you would apply it in the agricultural zone that the comp plan specifically says, that it's a non-growth zone where homes should be connected to the rural land use that's permitted in the zone.
I mean, it's a driveway is a driveway is a driveway, right? I mean, if you have a driveway running down the, you know, absolute boundary of two separate parcels, and those two individuals wanted to have a longer driveway and share the cost of that driveway, happens all over Maine, they're called camp roads, and that's not a publicly accepted street, but it's a driveway. You know, one house on one side, the other house on the other. I mean, this is, this happens in Maine everywhere. Again, we're getting way too prescriptive on this, and I'm starting to lean to where, like Steve was saying earlier, it's like, okay, along a publicly accepted street, you know, point six, even though they got shot down to 400 feet or whichever is less, they're creating strips, which we know from an urban planning standpoint, isn't good. And you want to create some, some variations within the, within the zone and within the area and the neighborhood because it is an agricultural neighborhood. It could prevent someone from farming the most productive farmland, which is in the front of their home, right? It could prevent that. So I think this should happen later. I mean, this should come forth to council, and we'll deal with this and the normal protocol of motions and amendments. But yeah, there's, this is a lot, this is, to me, this is, I'm trying to solve problems that they don't even know will exist, and when taken in its entirety is way too prescriptive on most fronts.
It, absolutely, it's micromanagement to do exactly what the income standard was for, which was to prevent anything from happening. That's, and all this is, is more of the same to prevent anything from happening.
I would just, you know, I understand where you're coming from on a lot of those comments, Councilor Mills. Some of these actually add ways to be able to build. So some of them are actually allowing and expanding on development opportunities with additional ways that you can farm. So I get where you're coming from, but I don't know that they're all what you're saying.
If we're going to have someone, there shouldn't be any restrictions on what they, if they're willing to utilize it to build a home, if we're willing to, if we're willing to say someone can timber harvest 10 acres in the ag zone, or we can have a gravel pit in the ag zone, if someone's willing to build a house and conserve it as land, conservation land, why isn't that not on there?
That's also allowed in the, in the proposal B.
So I can just say, "I want to build a house on 20% of my land, and I'm just going to keep it as, the rest of the other eight acres as timberland for now."
It could be for one of these other allowed uses, firewood processing, Christmas tree cultivation, farming.
I just want to leave it as eight acres of timber.
And you're going to allow public access and trail building.
I just going to leave it for conservation.
You'd have to provide public access as a recreational use of some kind, or have some other natural resource based use of that land that the ordinance allows for, for a house. But we still have that connection to the use of the land in the current ordinance.
So I couldn't post it.
And you'd have to somehow designate it either with a conservation easement or public access easement as public recreational lands that meets the straight face test in the ordinance. It still has to be connected to one of these allowed uses in the ag zone, the way that it's written.
So if we... I was just going to, just clarify, so this is the language that you, you already have those restrictions in place today. This is the clarification language. So at the, we're going to have this in three separate public hearings, correct, Eric?
Yep, yeah, there's two more changes after this one.
So we'll get to, we'll get to nine and 10 in a minute, but, so one through eight will come back before you in a public hearing. You can now determine whether or not you want to adopt all eight. If you want to amend something, we send that back to the planning board. Planning board would then take your amendment and go through that process again, or you adopt all one through eight, or you, you vote against one through eight. So those are, those are your options. So I just want to make sure we're clear in the process.
Okay, got you. Mr. Staples, a question for you. If we don't adopt these amendments and we go back to the ordinance, the way it sat, then if I understand it correctly, someone could buy a 10 acre lot, say, "I'm going to use it for recreation," build a house on 20%. And what's the, what do they need to do to get that approved? I don't have clarification on that.
Yeah, so they need to show that they are meeting all of the other requirements of the ag ordinance. So they're either, they're farming, they have a natural resource based use that is utilizing the other part of the land, could be timber harvesting, could be gravel extraction, could be Christmas tree cultivation are the examples that they're having.
But if I'm letting people drive their snowmobiles across my land?
That's a really weak public use, but it may qualify if they pack...
Who's going to decide?
Staff has to. And then...
So you're telling me, just by that statement right there, that somebody that doesn't own the land and isn't elected is going to decide whether somebody that owns that land, whether snowmobile trail across the land is recreational enough to be recreation?
And we, as staff, had asked for the planning board to serve that function, but this council did not want that to be that complicated.
I'm, I'm pointing out areas that are of concern to me, and I realize that I'm involved and responsible, so I just want to make sure as we go through this, that we don't want to have staff saying, "That's not enough recreation."
Well, and I think that the safety net for that is, I hear what you're saying, it's a lot of responsibility to be responsible for making that decision.
You've got plenty to do.
If, if we say no, that doesn't meet it, then every decision we make can be appealed to the Board of Appeals. So that's the backup. And you make those appointments to the appeals board.
Remember, this is what this body voted on.
I understand, I understand.
This wasn't a recommendation by staff. We agree with you.
I understand.
Leroy? Let's, one more question, let's wrap this up.
So it could be amended.
On number seven, just for a minute there, if I had 10 acres, and I've cut a hell of a lot of firewood in my lifetime, 10 acres wouldn't last two years. So after I cut it all off and we've destroyed most of the land because of the equipment we put in there, I can just sit back and say, 20 years from now, I might have a few trees to do firewood again, and you guys are going to accept that as...
No, you, you could continue to process firewood, even if some of that wood is coming from other lands in the surrounding area. So the firewood processing itself is an activity that they wanted added. It doesn't mean that every tree that you process comes from that piece of land, much like gravel pits that are...
We're going to wrap this up, we're going to move on. Okay, we're going to move on to the next agenda item. This is...
You still have two more.
Oh, we still have two more?
We just wanted to deliver these recommendations to you, and you get to decide which ones you would like to, to keep.
Real quick on that first one, are we voting through, on one through eight as one order, or do we vote on each one individually?
We could set it up individually, I believe, but the way that we set it up, because we didn't think there was as much controversy about those eight as we did that as a single public hearing at planning board. But planning board's already recommended that you don't include one of those, so I think you can choose not to include some others.
Or...
So the, the second one is what we've called the five-year from a tax program. So this really required that if somebody was in one of the current use tax programs like farmland, the forestry program, woodlot program, that they couldn't then build a house on that land for five years if they took it out of that program. You have to take out the piece you're building the house on, no matter what. Staff didn't recommend this and planning didn't, planning board did not recommend this, so that'll come to you with a recommendation not to include that change. The next one was to not allow a dwelling accessory to farming, forestry, or natural resource based uses or recreational uses in the Taylor Pond watershed. Staff did not recommend that. We think it is very restrictive. Planning board also did not recommend it, so that's going to come to you with a recommendation to vote it down as well. It's about 3,800 acres that make up the watershed. That includes all of the zones, but about 2,000 of those acres are in the ag zone, and where you're allowed to build on small lots right on the shores of Taylor Pond, we just don't see how it really offers a protection to stop a house tied to a farm on 10 acres.
Next item.
Next item is the minimum building size. We have, we have had for years in Auburn, minimum single family home size of 700 square The state has since changed state laws to require that we allow tiny homes of 0 to 400 square feet on any lot where a single family home is allowed. What we're seeing is, it's just illogical for somebody to build a 400 square foot home and then not be allowed to add 100 square feet to go to 500. So we're suggesting that you get rid of the 700 square feet. So we're suggesting that you get rid of the 700 square feet. It's been to planning board for workshop, it'll still go to planning board for public hearing, but where they talked about it, we wanted to get your feedback early if you disagree with that. We're saying strike the 700 square feet altogether. It also seems that there are some really nice home designs now in that 600 to 800-square-foot range that bring the cost down to a number that, we used firefighter, police, and teachers, if you had a couple, two income earners that are one of those three occupations, they can't afford to build a single-family home right now in Auburn. This is one way that brings the cost of a home, although it may be smaller than what we've been building over the last 20 years, it brings it down into an attainable range. CDBG asked for this with their accessory dwelling efforts and programs, and it makes a lot of sense. I think the planning board will, will ultimately support it, but we'll come back to you after they vote.
Now, these tiny homes, these small homes have, I mean, they're going to be hooked up to water and sewer, they're not just being built and then carted off after two or three years.
So they, they would have to be hooked up to an approved wastewater disposal system, so either a septic system or public water, public sewer. Could be septic and well, or it could be public water and public sewer.
Isn't the big definition to address Counselor Gary's point, tiny homes have wheels. Small homes are permanent.
And tiny homes can be built without wheels if they're less than 400 square feet, and they meet certain dimensional standards, so. They created a mess of definitions, really, with...
Yeah, I guess that's my question is, what in our, our ordinances, what types of things in our ordinances allow for any of these types of homes to be treated differently? And are there any ways that we can tie that up when we, when we discuss this?
So I guess I don't understand, this would make a change that treats tiny homes or small homes between 400 and 7 square feet, 700 square feet, the same as a home over 700. So if single-family homes are allowed, you can build it any size you want. There is a potential state law change that would set a minimum of 191, I think, square feet. But Auburn wouldn't do anything but allow for everything that state law allows for sizes.
So it's not a, it's a permanent home, and we're just taking away the restriction on the size?
Yes, or it could be a tiny home on wheels. But that would be less than 400 square, square feet and already allowed under the state law.
So we're talking about having a small home between 400 and 700, which right now is kind of a ton of bull.
That's hooked up to systems.
That's hooked up to a system.
That Counselor Gary said theoretically, someone could unhook to the system and haul away and, and on wheels.
If it's on wheels.
It could, yep.
Yeah, you could do most homes, you could put them on, I mean...
How big is, how many square feet's a mobile home? Because you could do that with a mobile home, that's on wheels.
And those are allowed on single-family house lots anywhere that single-family houses are allowed.
Primarily, this comes into play primarily from an urban planning standpoint with ADUs, smaller lots, in-town lots, an average apartment being built in the last two to three years, one bedroom is only, I want to say 640 square feet. Studios are prevalent at 560 to 580. So you're, you're in that same ballparker range.
Will this override covenants and other things in neighborhoods?
Absolutely not, nope. A private covenant could still...
Because there's lots of neighborhoods where you, you can't put a trailer.
Yeah, and we can't change that. You know, that was a decision of the landowner that stands.
Is there any other questions on this? I mean, just get us in compliance with state law when it happens come January 1, and that is hard. They're not moving on that one now.
One quick thing, the only thing that occurred to me with these smaller homes is, you know, when they do septic system design for larger homes, you know, they might say it's a three-bedroom, so it's got to be this certain size. My only concern with the small homes would be, you hope they don't undersize it and then just pack, pack the thing with people.
Yep.
Particularly for septic, because I'm, city sewer I wouldn't care about, but...
Yeah, they would have to meet the minimum design standards for the number of bedrooms they're designing to. And then if you were to add a bedroom, you can potentially create a design and record it without actually constructing that system to prove that it can be done if it fails.
Okay, I think we're good, I think we can go on to the next item now.
So next item, T42B.
Sorry, hold on, Counselor, how's your...
I was just going to ask if there is any verbiage that states what type of material they need to be made out of? Because I've seen some being made out of like Connex boxes and stuff like that, so didn't know if there was any language in there that specifies building materials.
They, they have to meet the state building code, or they have to meet the, if they are a tiny home, then there's a different standard they're allowed to meet. You can potentially build homes out of Connex boxes now, under the building code, but they typically require an engineer's stamp to modify them. But that, that is a possibility now.
I got an additional, how does this relate to our form-based code? So if it's not, you can't put a tiny little, you can't put a 200-square-foot house in a neighborhood where there's no 200-square-foot houses?
Sure you can.
That's form-based code?
Yep, you could.
You have complete flexibility within your lot, as long as your setbacks, it's freedom.
Yeah, okay.
Quick question about the other one that you did with the Taylor Brook stuff. A year or so back, we had some camp owners wanted to make their camps year-round. Will this interfere with, I mean, I don't know, we haven't had an update, so I don't know how far their projects went, if they, those that wanted to expand so they could live it, live in them year-round are in there? And will this change the fact to prohibit those that might not have jumped on board to live there year-round?
It shouldn't change anything for somebody making an existing camp year-round. And I think what the planning board recommended and what staff recommended is that you not further restrict development in the Taylor Pond watershed on ag-zoned land. So I don't, I don't see how this would affect whether or not they could make a camp year-round. They have to connect to city sewer, or the septic system needs to be outside of the Taylor Pond overlay, which is 250 feet from Taylor Pond still, as they did before. So T42B, we merged a lot into this packet and tried to separate it so that you could see each item as an independent item. There's a text change that was proposed by a petition, we'll go over that. There are four areas, and they were sort of broken into sub-areas for the planning board public hearing, so they could be decided on independently without having to go back for a new public hearing if they were altered again, that they could make separate decisions. LD 2003 is something that came up in the public meetings. So there's a couple points I wanted to make about that, and then just questions. We started applying the T42 standard to these areas last year. We've had some public meetings, and then the T42 standard being applied to the Court Street area was challenged by petition. So we paused these areas. We've developed the T42B. Since then, it's been applied to Court Street, and now we're going back to look at those other four areas that we had talked about last year. So these aren't new, although there are some minor modifications to them based on the process since then. The form-based code, T42B, this is the current existing ordinance, T42B, and it shows a bunch of different sections of it, but it covers the principal basing, placement of buildings, the diagrams that show us how to measure setbacks from public right-of-way, accessway, and parking lots. That's a subject of the petition change. And just the format of the current form-based code that really de-emphasized our focus on use and focused more on the form of the building and made the uses more flexible. It's had an impact. We are seeing new homes in the T42B district as well as others. We've talked about that a little bit over the past month. You'd never know it here, but that small garage to the right of the house is now an accessory dwelling unit.
Is that the after picture?
That's the after picture, yep, so. It's serving a great purpose for a home, they did a nice job with it, and really didn't change the appearance of the neighborhood. Another example, a brand-new home, separate lot, that was split and made possible in part by the reduced setbacks of the T42B district. It's 230 Lake Street, I think it's on the corner of Sunset and Lake, but allowed for the lot split and allowed more flexibility in citing this home. The petition to amend the T42 district was focused on clarifying, I think we discussed it a fair amount in the adoption of T42B, as well as the approval of projects, that you could measure the front setbacks from private access drives. We had changed the diagram in T42B to reflect that. This aimed at clarifying that further, but as we went through it and applied it to scenarios, it's also said that where you have shared access drives, which is something the comp plan encourages, and I think we want to make sure it's encouraged so we get new homes without new city maintenance responsibilities on new public roads, shall be measured from the private access drive. We thought that would be problematic. We still wanted to maintain the ability to measure it from the street frontage, but when they do have a shared access drive, the development could measure it from either area, which we think was allowed anyways, but that, that aimed at clarifying it, so there's no room for argument. Planning board and staff did not recommend that. We recommended a modified version of that that fixed some other challenges with T42B that we think could make it more flexible for one- and two-family homes, and allow that you may measure the front setback from the shared access drive instead of saying shall measure it from the shared access drive. We also made changes that the planning board supported to allow for greater flexibility in how much of the frontage is required to be built out, built out for one- and two-family homes. We have a minimum frontage build out for multis and commercial uses, but we thought it made sense not to require that because that's some of the complaints we're hearing about single-family homes that don't necessarily want to build out 60% of the frontage. And then staff recommended and the planning board supported not requiring minimum and maximum window and door percentages on the front of single-family home and two-family homes, but to keep it as-is for multis and commercials. That's the gist of the text changes that'll come before you on, on the fifth. The exact text language and the details is in your packet.
Any questions on this? It's been about a year, some good clarification, I'm glad it's working.
We are seeing a lot of activity. And I think we'll see more that are in discussion now over the coming year.
I want to say one thing on this, I'll get to Dana. When we're talking about the citizens' petition, this derived from a, from a group of citizens that turned in signatures in order to make this change happen, correct?
25 signatures, yep.
So it was the staff, this was the council, we never initiated this change. But this was kind of the impression that we were all working under anyways, correct?
Absolutely, yep. It was exactly how we interpreted the ordinance and approved a project under it. We think it allowed for what was approved, but this made it unarguably allowed.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, outside of the city of Auburn, can you point to a place in form, a place that uses form-based code that has this type of a, an ordinance where there'd be like a shared, not shared, that's not the right word, would, the, the setback would be measured from a private accessway? To me, I was looking for some examples, and I wasn't finding many.
Montana. The entire state.
Yeah, I think we have provisions that encourage shared access drives in multiple places in the ordinance, that the traditional downtown development district in the comp plan says that we need to encourage it. We thought we did by allowing it, but we can look for other examples for the fifth, if you want to, want us to explain those.
So I was just looking for like a best practices kind of thing. I mean, I know that there's, the citizens have an interesting idea here, and I just want to see like how it's applied in other places.
Yeah, I think this is a good way if we want to encourage private access drives, but we should still be encouraging houses to be sited close to the street on those smaller infill lots to match the traditional form. But you can also cite those adjacent to a shared road that the city doesn't have to, to maintain. So we can look for an example, though.
Any other questions on this? I was, I'm worried because, I'm concerned because with, when this happened, are we actually clarifying what our intent historically was with this? I mean, are we opening ourselves, I heard some people, you know, insinuate lawsuits, potential legal action if we pass this? This has already gone through our staff and our attorneys, correct?
It, it has, and staff and the attorneys recommended a slight variation of it, which corrected some other issues and, and used the word "may" instead of "shall" for that, that measurement. But we believe the ordinance already allows for this. We were very intentional about that in the drafting. Added the language to the diagrams in the ordinance that allowed for it to be measured from the street or private accessway or pedestrian accessway. This just further clarifies that.
Okay, good. That's, again, I just wanted to make sure we're further clarifying what our established intent was historically, because I remember having these conversations on certain projects and how if they had a, a private way, the frontage is going to be measured off that, very specific.
Very intentional in the planning board meetings as well.
On the big lots, on the big lots. It's on the videos, great.
Absolutely.
Well, that should eliminate any, you know, doubt of intent, now should it? Okay, Eric?
Areas A through D, these are the four other areas, the planning board process, through the planning board process, and I think the council mentioned this as well. We were asked to identify the conservation open space parcels and make it clear that those are not available for development. So we've done that with the changes, so the Houston Field, Sherwood Forest, Oak Hill Cemetery, parcel 25 acres owned by Andersgagen Land Trust, next to the Houston Farm, and 27 acres off of Lafayette Street, also owned by the Land Trust. Those are shown as conservation open space in the zoning maps. I think it does a couple of things. It makes it clear that they are open to public or neighborhood use, but it also shows that when we were talking about this large landmass, there's actually not as much development potential as somebody might assume if they didn't dig into the existing restrictions on those lands. It also shows that it's a great place to live, next to all of this conservation open-space land. Area A, we split that between A1 and A2. That included Broad Street, Mill Street, over to South Main Street, Loring Avenue, over to Walton School, and we split that into two because of the controversy around the Loring Ave parcels, so that basically the whole thing wouldn't get thrown out if that proved to be a controversy. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. Area B, along Vicary Road, kind of the downhill end along Riverside Drive, was Area B1, and then we added a connector strip that wasn't very popular with the planning board, back to Area A1, so they're going to rework that one a little bit next month before sending that one to you. Area C, cleaned up some boundary lines slightly to follow parcel lines where it was leaving slivers of parcel out, parcels out, that kind of thing. And Area D, we had proposed possibly leaving a portion of it as a different zoning district. The planning board didn't like that, so we, we changed the map boundaries, and the majority of the YMCA parcel would now remain in the general business district, and everything south of Bob and Mill would become T42B. Area A, this shows the general area. You can see the T42B area as this teal color, conservation open space, Sherwood Heights, Sherwood Forest area, and that area ends before you get to Loring Avenue and leaves that parcel on Loring Ave out as part of Area A1. But you also see that it's included in Area A2 in a second as a separate decision. We talked with the planning board, want to make sure it's on your minds as well. That area does cross what the comp plan has called for as a potential connector road. We'll have to be mindful of that. That would essentially be an extension of Rodman Street across Washington and over to South Main Street someday. So we just want to make sure that the board is mindful of any development proposals that they try to protect that corridor through an approval. And there is a mechanism to do that for anything but non-sub... through an approval. And there is a mechanism to do that for anything but non-subdivision. So one and two family homes could be built in that area, but if there's a subdivision, they have to find that it doesn't impact the city's ability to achieve their long-range plan. So there's a mechanism to do that as we further refine exactly where that road would be. We still have planning to do around that, so it's sort of a broad swipe right now, not knowing what the exact environmental constraints will be. Area A two includes the Loring Ave area over to the parcel that was before you for the multifamily suburban change here. It recognizes the large swath of conservation open space, Oak Hill Cemetery to Houston Farm to Andrusgoggin Land Trust to more Andrusgoggin Land Trust over here. And it starts to really form that green belt that the comp plan calls for around New Auburn that hopefully someday you can walk up the Little Andrusgoggin on Barker Mill Trail, cut over onto Broad Street, cross through to Sherwood Heights, and then follow this conservation land all the way through to Riverside Drive and walk the perimeter of the built-up portions of New Auburn. The planning board did not recommend approval of this, so this will be coming back to you with a negative recommendation on the fifth. It does include Walton School. I think the merits of it are very similar to A one, but there was a lot of controversy around it and that's the way the board decided.
What was the, what was their objection?
So there are neighbors of that Loring Ave parcel, as well as some of the surrounding neighborhood, that were advocating that it not be included, and the planning board went with that decision.
Eric, on this note, let's just peel, let's just get right to the meat of it. Loring Avenue, highly controversial. It's the only thing that's controversial here.
Yep.
If we look at LD two thousand three, and I want to be, try to be, right now, when LD two thousand three goes into effect, it's going to allow that density in Loring Avenue. What is the density currently?
So it's six units per acre. We did talk about this. We'll be able to skip it later on the slides.
Oh, you have it, you have it on the slides?
Well, it's the LD two thousand three slide. It's one of the things that we talked about at those meetings. I wanted to make sure we talk about it so people understand that.
Well, let's talk about Loring specifically right now. Fifteen acres.
Yep, urban residential, so after...
Can you point out the Loring area up here for me, please?
The parcel in particular is this large block here next to the conservation open space. And Loring is here.
In teal?
Yep.
In blue?
Yep.
Shows no little lines.
So my understanding was when they carved out the Houston Farm that they very intentionally kept a piece for development but conserved the majority of it. It's been available for sale periodically. Under our current zoning, you could do six units per acre, so of two family homes, six times fifteen, ninety.
Ninety, times two and a half, or two hundred and fifty percent.
If you...
Two twenty-five.
Yes. So if LD two thousand three will allow that, but it'll only allow it if they're income restricted at fifty percent.
So let's, let's be really clear. Come January one, if we don't act, a developer can build two hundred and twenty-five income restricted units where fifty percent of the units have to be restricted to sixty percent of the low to moderate income level or lower because that's going to be state law. By changing this to form-based code, there is no density, per se, so there's no multiplier. And you can get less homes built. This new zoning protects this area from high density.
You, you could do a similar density, but it wouldn't be income restricted. Yeah. Under T four two B.
And if, correct me, I can't remember the specifics, but under LD two thousand three, when a developer comes with this two and a half multiplier of density, the planning board approval process is different. In other words, it's very rarely can they say no. They have a certain checklist that they can hit, and if they hit that, i.e. water and sewer, they're good. Doesn't matter what the public says. It doesn't matter what their opinion of the planning board is. That prevents the discrimination against the low-income type or subsidized housing.
That was intentional.
It was intentional.
It does allow for multi, we have to allow for multi-family structures as part of achieving that density.
What was the finding of fact that the planning board used to not add that in?
It was a traffic and safety finding, I believe. I should have the minutes back by the end of this week, but they'll be included in your packet on the fifth. So Area B one, B two, this area on the downhill end of Vicry near South Main was shown as B one. The planning board asked for a way to connect that, to not have the disconnect any longer with Area A one, which is right here, just to the north of Vicry, the previous area that we just talked about. They didn't like this strip idea. We looked at multiple ways to do it. I think what they're looking for is to expand it and follow the turnpike to the south along South Main Street. We'll prep those maps for them for their next meeting, and then we'll get a recommendation out of them at a future meeting for the council. But they really didn't want to have this separation of split zone lots.
So they're going to, they're recommending adding the low-density country residential period portion to the four point two B?
And the rural residential, all the way down to Turnpike and South Main Street intersection. So we'll prep the maps. They'll have their public hearing. We are working, and this may interest you if you want, at the September planning board meeting. We will have the water and sewer studies presented by our consultant for how we'd serve these areas with water sewer in the future. Area D, the final one, Manly Road, Hotel Road area, oh, sorry, C. C is Manly Road, Hotel Road area. It changes the suburban residential zone here, urban residential zone to T four two B. It does leave out, and this is something that came up in the discussion, this sort of island of suburban residential zone here that we may want to consider, and I think we'll talk to the planning board about that. That's further in on Poland Road in that area. That's also currently suburban residential zone.
Eric, is that right on the corner there where, what is that, is that where Poland Road and Hotel Road, the general business district? That's a garage, right? That's not an accepted use in four point two B, is it?
It's not, and it's always been this island zone that's recognized the continuation of that use. We could look at changing that, but it was, it was a alternated repair shop for years. I don't remember what the name of it was then, but it's an auto repair shop. Planning board recommended approval of this area, but again, I think we left a couple of islands to the north of there between the Court Street area, T four two B, and this area that we may have those come back as a separate item with the planning board.
And that, up in the upper right-hand corner, that purple, so we've got the general business, and then we've got that purple. What part, that's, that's that road that goes from Pride, I think, from one side to the other?
Poland and Pride, and it's, it's really surrounded by either T four two B, general business, or industrial. There's a mix of land uses out there, and it's not really logical to leave that if we're going to do everything else around it. So I think we'll ask the planning board if they want to forward a recommendation to you on that at a future meeting.
Because the suburban residential has a density.
It does, yep. Has water and sewer. We need to make changes to it just to comply with LD two thousand three anyways, and that's one way, one way to do it. Final area D, Northern Avenue, kind of east of Center Street, following North River Road up, across Mount Auburn, the crossover to Lewiston, and then to Bradman Road, and then stopping at the south side of Bob and Mill Brook. That's another area that has a lot of multifamily suburban already, and urban residential, water and sewer are available, and there's a fair amount of interest in, in housing possibilities in that area.
Eric, real quick, Steve, you asked about findings of fact, right? Or someone did, or Rick?
I was saying...
But there really weren't no findings. I mean, we don't have in this packet, facts one, two, and three for denial.
They, they gave reasons. I'll have those for your packet. I just wasn't able to get the minutes completed in time for this packet to go out when it had to. But they did give reasons on most of them, if not all of them, and we'll make those clear in the packet. We just didn't want to wait for public notice in the fifth to deliver these to you because there's a lot here, and you have some time to look at the materials.
Thank you.
Is this the final area?
This is the final area, and I think we've really covered the gist of LD two thousand three. We have to allow for up to four units. Where we have a density standard, you can do two and a half times that if fifty percent of them are affordable. And then we have to allow accessory dwellings and lots. Auburn already does that. Nothing really changes there. And then it sets statewide housing goals. We think that having, being ahead of other communities and having these types of standards in place might position us for funding for infrastructure to help the state meet those housing goals.
So let me kind of go back in history a little bit, and I think I alluded to this a while ago. As you know, I was right there testifying and working on LD two thousand three, and a couple of years ago, when this was working its way through the legislature, I recognized the two and a half multiplier. And then coupled with what Auburn already did with form-based code, I recognized that form-based code doesn't have density. So two and a half times zero, zero. You've got to build it to the dimensions within, apply by your setbacks. The reason we've been pushing, or I've been pushing hard for form-based code, is so we avoid what's going to happen in Loring Avenue, which is a developer will buy that lot, have it at fifty percent low to moderate income, or fifty percent of the rentals at sixty percent or lower, and go to two hundred and twenty-five units there. That's what's going to happen because it's perfect. It's got water. It's got sewer. By adopting form-based code in some of these areas, what we're doing is we're actually making things more predictable, and we're circumventing, in what my opinion, is some of the, the not-good things about LD two thousand three. Also did advocate to have it pushed out till January and further in certain situations, but it's January one for larger municipalities in order to give this body and the planning board more time to do this, to get it through. Okay, so final, and now we have final rule makings done. We can talk about this, but this is the model going forward.
Four point two B is saving these neighborhoods.
Yes, yes. And everybody who's been fighting this has delayed this and put our neighborhoods at more risk of massive blocks, which we've talked about is not, and this city council's, you know, a goal or strategic plan to have large blocks of two hundred or two hundred and fifty units of affordable or low-income housing. They don't believe in that. We haven't done it since 2018 or before. Four point two B saves Auburn from that, and I hope that after this workshop, more people understand that what we've been doing isn't out to destroy Loring Avenue. I'm going to use it because it's the most, it's a perfect example, okay? Or stable ridge. One of the reasons we did four point two B there was to avoid the negative implications of LD two thousand three. So there's a reason to this, and it's a smart strategic reason. So we talk about smart growth, sensible growth. Changing everything to form-based code now is sensible growth. So I just want everybody to understand what that strategic goal here is, and that's hard for people to say.
Perhaps gives us time to change...
We got till January one.
Change in the future, change our state representation, and perhaps we can have them repeal two thousand three because that could go...
Or modified sections.
Or modify it to a sensible legislation.
And I'm not going to advocate for or against any one of those, but I will say that I do believe that a multiplier and affordable of two and a half times density is an unfair standard that only applies to a certain category of individuals, and fundamentally, I think that's what Auburn doesn't want. Rick?
I just want to comment on LD two thousand three and that two and a half multiplier. It's well-intended, but the problem is, the problem with it is, it should have been applicable to low-density, you know, suburban-type places like Cape Elizabeth that have repeatedly rejected affordable housing, and not to a municipality like Auburn, which already has quite permissive zoning, unnecessary.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it.
Oh, next is executive session. Okay. Mr. Manager, do we have enough time? Okay, great. This time I'd like to entertain a motion to enter into executive session, develop economic development pursuant to one MRSA, section four oh five six C, which premature disclosure would prejudice the competitive or bargaining position of the city. Do you have a motion?
It's moved.
I have motion for Councilor Staples and a second for Councilor Walker. All those in favor? We'll now start an executive session. We'll reconvene at seven o'clock in chambers.
We'll reconvene at seven o'clock in chambers. We'll reconvene at seven o'clock in chambers.
I think we're live. I'd like to call the order of the city council meeting for August 21st, 2023. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda, first on the agenda, we have the minutes of the August 7th, 2023 regular city council meeting. Are there any corrections? If not, I'll adjutant motion at this time to approve the minutes of the August 7th, 2023. Mr. Councilor Maxwell, second for Councilor Walker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes seven zero. Now on the communications, communications, Mr. Manager, first up is your communication on recycling.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Just a few things regarding cycling, recycling. We have been involved in this now, coming up now on two months, almost two months. What we have determined through this process and working with Casella is access to the plant is not available on Saturday and Sunday. The majority of people bringing their recycling in is Saturday and Sunday. We are unable to empty those containers during the weekend. So we have three containers from Casella currently. They have no other containers available to us. What we'll be proposing is that we'll be moving the containers inside the fenced-in area at Public Works. Part of that will be so that we are controlling the time of when people are bringing our recycling to the containers. The, we will make them available on Saturdays. We'll open the gate, make it available, just like it was at M-WAC. M-WAC was Monday through Friday and then a half day on Saturday. We tried to make this available so that 24/7, anyone out of convenience could go, but what's happened is there's a lot of frustration with not being able, you're driving there, you get there, and there's no room to place your recyclables. So we believe this will help. We'll have scheduled hours. We'll encourage people to use those scheduled hours. We will continue periodically checking residency. We still have folks from out of town that still are using the recycle bins for their recycling. So we will continue doing some spot checking for residents only. And we also, even though we have signs that were placed, the, the signs state if the bins are full, please do not leave your recyclables. They're leaving them between all the bins. They're leaving them up on top of the bins. Those recyclable materials that are being left are now usually contaminated and not able to be used. So we're collecting that and staff is needing to take that to M-WAC. So we believe this is the solution moving forward. Again, staff is trying to work to try to make this available for the public. We still have some people putting their household waste in those bins as well, even though it's very clear it's recyclable only. Inside, we can periodically have staff check, take a look at what people are bringing, hopefully be able to police it the best we can. However, we believe this will solve the overstuffing of the bins and accessibility. Because I can understand if you're driving from Outer Riverside Drive and you come all the way to Public Works Building on a Sunday afternoon at 2:00 and those bins are full and you have no place to put your recycling. So we understand that frustration. We believe this will help. It does hamper convenience. We get, we get that piece. But we believe this will ensure that if you're coming, you're going to be able to have space. We're emptying currently two bins on Monday, two bins on Wednesday, and two bins on Friday. So when we start off on Friday, we at least have two bins that are empty for the weekend. However, those two bins are being full, are being filled. Casella is the one that hauls those bins for us and bring those bins back. They are operating outside of our current contract. This was not part of the contract that we had. We had curbside. We made that change, which was allowable within our contract, to make that change, and so we did that. However, Casella's been working with us to try to make this work. However, their plant is not open on Saturday and Sunday. So, any questions on that? I think that that's where we're at currently. We'll continue pushing this out on social media. We'll make it available on the website so people know the hours. I will work with staff. I don't have a date when this will be going into effect, only because I want to make sure the pad's ready inside, we move all the bins, and we can make it as seamless as possible.
Can you tell us off the top of your head the times right now that we're open?
Currently, they're open 24/7. Moving forward, though, we would be probably 7:00 a.m. I'll work with staff. We have a skeleton crew on second shift that could close that at a certain hour. We want to make sure people can go there either after work or on their way home. So we'll work on extending those hours Saturday. We're thinking it's going to be somewhere around 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Saturday.
Is adding additional bins not in the cards?
So Casella does not have any bins. We're pricing out, it would be our cost. Casella's not going to make another bin available. These are their bins. They're not going to make another bin available to us. It would be at the city's cost if you wanted to buy those bins. We will, and one thing I didn't mention, we are still collecting at the high school. So the high school is still recycling. Casella's still picking up at the high school.
Mr. Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You also said the Sustainable Committee has met and they're discussing this issue?
So I have communicated with some of the committee. The Sustainable Committee did take a look at the signage, the verbiage. I have let a couple know that this is something that we're exploring, but that's, that's to the extent of that. This is more of a administration of this issue.
So then how soon will they be get together to formulate a plan so that when next we start working to budget, we can budget in a cost for recycling?
Well, hold on, that's, that's, let's not get ahead of ourselves because you're, we're still have no proof that, that this is being recycled. Okay, and I think that is what the committee needs to look at. Okay, so before we say we got to bring it back, let's look at the fact that Minnetonka, Poland, Mechanic Falls, populations similar to ours combined have no curbside recycling. Very few municipalities do, and Minnetonka doesn't even have recycling. They were using ours for 30 years without anyone knowing. So I don't want to, I don't want to go and insinuate a promise here to the public on bringing something back at this point. That's not the purview.
Yeah, what we will be doing is we'll be working with this Sustainability Work Group to develop the RFP that will need to go out. We'll probably start working with them in November, December to start drafting that. It'll be important for us to ensure that we're in that RFP, we're including recycling, so that the council has an option to consider when the RFP is returned. So the Sustainability Work Group was given that information. I believe they shared that at their last, their last meeting that they had. But we'll get back together with them in November.
Councilor Staples.
Yeah, City Manager just kind of touched on what I was going to ask, but I think where this is a really sensitive issue for the entire city. I've had lots of people reach out to me on this. I think that it's really important to just keep the public involved and keep them informed as to what the, where the process is as far as what the sustainability group is, is coming up with here. If we have a path to include recycling for 2025, then, you know, I think we should just keep that coming and let people know what's going on. I get a lot of questions, mostly of what's going on, what's happening. And even when the city's done as many different things as they've had to publicize this and it's been in the paper, people are still just finding out. And I think that it's just important to just keep the message coming. It's not a one-time thing. It's something that we're just going to have to keep telling people what, what's going on. I don't think that we have, we've come to a perfect solution to anything, but I appreciate the city, you know, working towards this and trying to come up with something that works. And, and you know, we're just going to have to keep pushing. And I hope that we can come to a better solution for the next year, but you know, at this point, we just have to make do with what we have.
Mr. Mayor, may I please continue?
I thought you were done, but yes.
No, you, you kind of stopped me. We also got to make, sorry, sir. We've got to make also provisions out there so public will be more aware that we're also collecting food scraps and stuff to get that, the tonnage out of our normal garbage, because then our costs of processing garbage or even the recyclables will be different. And the end product of the food waste is fertilizer, which we can either use for city projects or we could also give it to residents as well. And neither programs have been publicized. I mean, we did, we did well publicizing the recycling in the beginning, but towards now is basically gone by the wayside. And Auburn has a lot of people coming in and out, so the ones that are here now don't all know about what our recyclable programs are.
Is there anything else? Okay, further communications?
I would just say that we'll, it's certainly on our website. I think that when we have the new hours, we'll, we'll do a postcard. We'll put regarding the composting. It's currently, if you're taking your recyclables to the bin, you're seeing the composting that's available there. Composting is still being used at Engine 2 on South Main Street. We are working on getting an update from We Compost It so that we have a good report on what's taking place with that. But we can certainly put that on the postcard. But our website, if you go to our sustainability page on our website, all of that's there. So we are, we are communicating that out. But we'll continue to do so. We'll look at the postcard as well, so that way their people know the hours.
Okay, go around in the council at this point, start off to my left. Councilor Staples, any communications to or about city business?
Yeah, I just went to the National Night Out a week ago. It was a wonderful event. I wanted to thank the city for putting that on, especially the police department, fire department.
Mr. Walker?
Nothing at this time.
Nothing, thank you.
Ski season? Felt like it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo what the good Councilor Staples said. I went to the National Night Out, too. I thought it was a fantastic event. It was pretty well-attended. They had a lot of different nonprofit groups there that were handing out information. Kids were having fun. Even our city staff, they had manned or personed, I better be correct there, personed tables. They were giving out information about city programs. Our fire department, police department were there, as well as Public Works and city, I mean, even the rec department was there. It was a fantastic event and the music was excellent.
Very good. I just want to make everyone aware, two events that are coming up. September 9th is Blues and Brews here this afternoon over at Festival Plaza right across the street. It's going to be a wonderful event. But right before then, I want to make sure everybody knows, in council, I gave you two additional, you have three invites right now on your podium, and we can get you more. And I think we're going to need it. Ever Little High School, Sunday, August 27th, 2 to 5. We're going to have a ribbon cutting. We're going to have speeches, some good old-fashioned pomp and circumstance. And then we're going to open the high school up for tours. And for, has everybody in the council been in the high school yet? It is amazing. It's absolutely amazing. There's been some news articles done on Channel 6 and Channel 13 about the inside of it. So I'm looking forward to seeing people remember. It's on Harris Street. Used to be Auburn Heights. Come in off Western Avenue. Come in off Western Avenue. The other entryway by Forest is blocked off. They're doing demolition and construction on the fields. So everybody come in on Western Avenue. There'll be plenty of parking. It is a rain or shine event. If it's raining, we will just move inside of the community room, and that's where we're going to have the speeches and the ribbon cutting there. So remember, August 27th, that's Sunday, 2:00. Be there on time, please, to 5.
The community room here?
No, the community room at the high school. Oh yeah, big surprise there. I don't want to talk too, too much. It's gorgeous. So, great views of Auburn. And that's it for communication. We're going to move on. No, you have something else? Go for it.
Sorry, thanks. Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of things. One, residents should have received their tax bill in the mail. One thing that is important is that our tax bill is, is clear and concise, and we bring clarity to it. Unfortunately, the tax bill shows homestead exemptions as zero. Other exemptions is including your homestead exemption. It was a miss on the printer that we, we go out, we go out and have these printed up to go out. It's, my apologies that that was missed. I think that we are working with anyone who calls to let them know that if they see that value of $23,500 or greater in that, that column, that's your, that's your homestead exemption. It shouldn't have said other, it should have been under the homestead. We will, we will work to make sure that the public is, is clear on that if they have any concerns regarding homestead. Homestead is not something you need to sign up for each year. It's not the same as the senior tax stabilization bill. And so once you've signed up for homestead, you will always have the homestead. So that's the one update. The other one is movie night in the park. So we will be at the Powell Center on September 1st at 8:00 p.m. It will be Light Year will be playing. We'll have a lot of community partners there as well. We usually have a great turnout when it's, we're holding that there. And also, the Powell Center had their backpack giveaway for back to school. They handed out 256 backpacks. So we had a great turnout for that. It's a great opportunity. We have a lot of partners that come together to make that happen, and that just continues to grow every year. So we really appreciate our community partners. That's it.
Good. I'm going to move this open to the first open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business, which is not on tonight's agenda. Members, if you'd like to speak, just to step up to the podium, give us your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Mara King, 59 Davis Avenue. Wasn't it five minutes?
No. Plating Board's five, City Council's three.
Okay. I just want to comment on the information that I just learned about recycling. I've been living in this community for over 20 years. When I first came, I was having recycling every single week. And I have consistently done that. I couldn't get bins. I got my own bins. Over the years, I've gotten my own bins. Then it went to every other week. Then it went to off-site. I don't feel like I had a lot of notice in any of that. And then hearing today that it's not going to be accessible regularly, I work, I have historically worked very long hours. I am a professional in this community. And what I'm hearing is disincentives to recycle. I hear the mayor doesn't believe that recycling happens. I hear that it's going to be more restrictive, less access. I will have to, I can't just go when I want to. So every, every step in recycling in Auburn has made it more difficult for me to recycle. And also, I bring my stuff to the recycling, and I have heard about the compost, and I haven't seen it. Now, most of the people who are going to recycle are going to recycle. They're not going to be looking around. Like, we need more education on all of these things. And I'm, it makes me so angry to hear more restrictions. And I think about all the people downtown who can't get there. People on my street, Mr. Hosler's on my street, people on my street still think there's recycling. Every other Tuesday, the green bins are out. Like, this community council has done a crap job of getting it out. We have smart people. We have professional people who read the paper and who watch the news, and they're still putting their recycling out. Like, I just, I'm frustrated, I'm angry, and it's embarrassing. And, and I think that it's horrifying that we're talking about no budget for recycling. Like, it's horrifying. And I think it's a, that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Does anybody else would like to speak during open session?
Scott Berry, 179 Davis Avenue. And before I start speaking, I'd like to hand out a handout to the councilors, if you don't mind.
If you could, just please give it to the clerk. He'll make sure we get them.
Thank you.
Good evening, esteemed council members and honorable mayor. I'm here tonight after reading in the Sun Journal that a representative from the city of Auburn suggested during the Andes Gargan County Commissioners Meeting that the current courthouse could be demolished. Tonight, I stand before you to discuss a compelling initiative advocating for the county commissioners to embark on a project of significance, the construction of a modern county facility, and the transformation, repurposing of our current county courthouse into a vibrant and enriching fine arts museum. Imagine the possibilities that could unfold within our county if this vision comes to fruition. Envision the prospect of hosting art exhibits on a global scale within treasures of loan from Europe, Asia, Africa, the Middle East, Australia, South America, Canada, and the United States. Such a cultural convergence would not only enrich our community, but also create a tapestry of worldwide connections right here within our own county. To begin, I want to acknowledge To begin, I want to acknowledge I previously introduced the concept of establishing a new county facility and repurposing the existing courthouse as a fine arts museum during a recent meeting with the commissioners. I was encouraged by generally, I was encouraged by the general positive reception it received from the commissioners. As we envision a future that not only meets the evolving needs of our residents, but also celebrates our history and creativity, these projects symbolize a profound step toward the aspiration. The proposal I bring before you is not just about bricks and mortar. It embodies a vision of growth, inspiration, and engagement. Recognizing the constraints of time, I'm making every effort to ensure that everyone here tonight is fully informed and aligned about this proposal. With the intention, I am providing each of you with a copy of the proposal or shared with the commissioners, which you have. A new county facility thoughtfully designed and equipped holds the potential to streamline administrative operations, improve public services, and create an environment conducive to efficiency governance.
Thank, Mr. Berry, thank you very much.
Excuse me?
Thank you. Your time is up. We have everything right here, though. We will look at it.
All the time?
Your time is up, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. You have what I got.
We do. Is there anybody else in the community that would like to speak during the first open session? Not being, I'll close the open session. We're going to move on to unfinished business. We have none. Next on is new business is order 110-08212023, directing the city manager to report back to council relating to cost, funding source, and location of proposed aquatic center. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Move.
Councilor Walker?
Second.
Councilor Haas? Open this up to the public for comment. Any members of the public that would like to speak? So please step up to the podium and state your name and address. None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Councilors, any debate on this? None being? I will ask for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Pass is 6-1. Next is order 111-08212023, allocating $50,000 out of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds for Safe Voices in Lewiston. Do I have a motion?
Some of, second.
Councilor Staples, second, but Councilor Walker. Open this up to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment? Sure. If you'd like, please, please, podium, yes. Same rules apply.
Same old spot, different day. Hello, I'm Alicia Johansson, Executive Director of Safe Voices. We are the Domestic Violence and Human Sex Trafficking Resource Center for Franklin, Oxford, and Andrus Goggin County. So tonight, we are asking the city of Auburn to contribute to our program hub that serves all three counties, but in particular, out of the 2,000 people we serve every single year, the majority of them are from Lewiston, Auburn area. We also have a shelter within the community that you may know about that is at a non-disclosed confidential location and serves a tremendous amount of Auburn residents every single day and have for many, many, many years. And we will continue to do so. We also run two transitional housing unit buildings here in Auburn. And so, this funding will help us renovate our resource center. It's a 12,000 square foot resource center at 100 Lisbon Street, Lisbon Avenue. Oh, my gosh, sorry, Lisbon Street. And we have gone to many, many, many people. We ran a capital campaign. The capital campaign goal was to raise $1 million. We raised 1.6. We were so thrilled with ourselves. And then inflation and all the costs of construction increased dramatically. And so, we're looking at actually closer to $2 million now. It was 1.9 when we submitted the proposal. It has creeped up a little bit more. And so, although there is 50,000 in this proposal for you all, I would also, we would be very grateful for that, and we still need to close a gap. We need more than 50,000. And so, if there was additional ARPA funds, I would ask for you to consider that this is a hub that is going to be in our community for decades to come and does a tremendous amount of work for our community every single day. And the resources would be good, put to really good use. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Now, thank you very much at this time. Yeah, I mean, stand by, you never know. But thank you very much for that. This is council, just a little, some of the rationale behind that, too. Sources and uses. The county did commit $150,000. The city of Lewiston committed $100,000. I'm sorry. Oh, they just did another? Okay, post your letter, got it. So 200,000 for the city of Lewiston, and we actually stand at 50,000. Initially, when we thought it was 100,000, we looked at the total uses because we represent roughly 24% of the overall population of, not even, 21% of the population of the county. Lewiston, Auburn combined are around 51%. So we're trying to be proportional, very similar to the methodology that was utilized during the main mill funding source that we did about a year and a half ago. So I just want to give you some background. So right now, we have a motion on the floor for a $50,000 contribution from ARPA to Safe Voices.
Got a question. How much more money do you need?
When we submitted this, we were close to 300, but I'm safely saying it was probably close to 350 or 4. We just brought in. So I think we're, we just got another 100. We just got another 25. We just got another 10, so that's 135. I want to say we're still about 150, 125.
Is your hole?
Say that again?
That's your deficit right now.
That's our, yeah. And that would allow us to do every single thing we need to do in that building without having to cut any corners.
Without, and that is with or without taking into consideration of the 50,000 that we have on the table currently?
Oh, no, that is not counting that.
Okay, so your hole's 50, your deficit's 150,000? And, okay, got it. And that's?
I'm doing really quick math.
Yeah, no.
So because at the time, we were close to 3, we just got another, oh, no, wait, sorry. Hold on. Minus 1, and then we did 25, and then we got 10. So that's 2.
Carry the 2.
Yeah, really. I mean, yeah, let's just say 150, 175. I think that's what I said. Yeah, just to be safe.
Hey, inflation or interest rates might go up tomorrow. Who knows?
Correct. And what we're hoping to not have to do is take out a loan or to go back out to our donors yet again and say, we thought it was a million, and then you got us to 1.6, and then we thought it was 1.9, and now it's closer to 2.
Tough positions. Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Any debate, comments, motions, amend, anything? Nothing? Yeah. Councilor Haas?
How much currently do we have in the, for ARPA funds, roughly?
We have less than 5, 565.
565. I'm looking at fingers on buttons. We need to think about this? Now, listen, here's my recommendation. I can tell, I know you all very, very well, that sometimes you're not, you're, okay, what are we doing? If you want, we can start off with the allocation as written. You have options. Start off the allocation as written. Come back in a few weeks, looking at sources and uses. As Safe Voices gets closer to their ultimate goal and ready to pull the trigger, I think certain things with their contractor will become clearer with regards to what their needs are. And then we can always go back and look at filling in holes, filling in spaces as needed. Or you can allocate more money to the current $50,000. I would probably recommend that you not exceed over $100,000. You keep it proportional based upon population and use. It's just a good model that we've kind of followed through. Or you pass as, or you don't pass, I mean, that's a third option.
Lewiston's allocated 200 from?
So Lewiston, 200. Plus, they also gave us funds to do some programmatic work that I'm considering not part of the renovation, but they did use, I believe, ARPA funds to do some of that. And then the county did 150. I will also say, a lot, we have a lot of heavy programmatic work that happens here in Auburn as well.
Councilor Staples?
Yeah, I'm inclined to up the amount of money that we donate here. I'm a little nervous about not having certainty about what the ask is. You know, so I would like to know exactly, like, what is it that would make you guys whole? What is it that, you know, we should do as a council here? I want to support the project. I think what I would recommend, though, is that I make a motion that we table this until the next meeting to get a better number. And then we'll address it at the next meeting, the first meeting in September. So it'd be September, is it?
September 5th.
5th.
Please.
I have two pieces of information that might be helpful. So the reason why my numbers are not definite is because we had previously gone out to bid. We were working with a contractor. That was not going well. We parted ways with that contractor and we are going back out to bid in a couple of weeks. What I'm hoping does not happen is that it goes up. And so, at this place, we have to have a contingency. And so, that's why I'm saying the 175, because when we had first asked, it was 300. And we've now gone and raised additional money. And so, I don't know if I'll be able to give you the hardest number in six weeks from now, because when they start the actual project, it could go up. And it could, or it could go down. But my guess is it's going to go up.
Right now, we have a motion on the floor to table this to September 5th. Do I have a second?
I retract my motion.
Retract your motion. Very good. Do I have any other motions?
I'd like to move to amend the, amend the order to allocate an additional 50,000 from ARPA funds to make it a total of 100,000.
I have a motion to amend the order and increase it by 50,000 for a total of 100,000 of ARPA funds to Safe Voices. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. I'll have debate on the motion to amend the amount from 50 to 100,000. Is there any dissents? Anyone dissenting?
Yes.
Okay. Councilor Gary, do you want to give a reason?
Yes, sir. I support this project with my whole heart, but there's other groups, nonprofits in Auburn that are also have reached out to us. We also have the PAL Center's grocery program. Their numbers are seeing greatly increased. They too have not come forward, but I know for fact, just by, just by watching and knowing within my heart and my mind, they too need more monies. So until we fleshed out everything that we need to spend first, I cannot support at this point until we know the outcome of other things, giving more than 50,000. So if this motion goes forward, as much as I want to support it, I will not.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak, any that support or opposition to the motion to amend?
I also agree with Belinda, because I think if anything, we should give them the 50,000 tonight and move on.
I have a motion on the floor right now to increase the given amount from 50,000 to 100,000. Any other debate? None being, I'm going to ask for a vote on the motion to amend. All those that support the increasing funds from 50,000 to 100,000, raise your hand. All those opposed? Passes, the motion passes by vote of 4-3. The motion now stands as amended for $100,000. I'm going to ask for a vote. All those in favor of giving Safe Voices $100,000, the amended motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Pass is 5-2. If I spoke too quickly, that means?
This is ARPA money.
This is, yeah, this is ARPA money. So Safe Voices allocation at $100,000 versus 50,000 is proposed. We're going to be moving on at this time. Next is order 112-08212023, allocating $20,000 from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds, the Boys and Girls Club of Southern Maine Auburn Clubhouse, with 10,000 to be presented, to be the presenting sponsor for the Fall for the Kids, Fall for the Kids fundraising event, and an additional $10,000 for additional Auburn programming. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Councilor Gary, Councilor Walker. Open this up to public comment. If there's anybody in the public that would like to speak? If not, we'll move on to debate and vote. No? Okay.
I'd just like to add, I support this. And I'd also support any of our, I wholeheartedly agree with you that we have other folks that need to come forward. And I would support that as well, because we've done some really good things, longstanding things that are going to benefit our community for generations with the ARPA money. But there are people in need, and we have a half a million dollars left. And I'd like this, or more.
400. We just spent 100. But yeah, go on.
No, that's 465.
Okay, 465.
Almost half, that's almost half a million. So 400,000. And there's a lot of people in need. And if there's people that are in need and want to come forward, it's ARPA money, so.
Yeah, I mean, we do. I really appreciate the city manager and Rita's periodic updates on this. We have helped youth, tremendous amount of youth organizations, from Auburn Suburban Baseball Softball to the YMCA, Auburn Ski Association. There's a lot out there that we've done, and there's more. So, and one of the reasons we sent the letter out to every member of the city, every resident of the city a couple of weeks ago, was to help get that word out. So I look forward to seeing what else comes down the line. Is there any other comments either supporting or not supporting the Boys and Girls Club of Auburn? No? Okay, I'm going to ask for a vote at this time. Remember, it's an allocation, it's a two-part allocation. $10,000 will be the presenting sponsor for their Fall Fest for Kids, which I now expect a wonderful menu to be on that. Right, steak, lobster, maybe? And then another $10,000 for additional Auburn programming later on.
Could I, could I ask the director to tell us exactly?
Absolutely. If he wants to come up, he's got every opportunity to.
Come up there, Gary.
So I'm the area director of the Boys and Girls Club in Andrus Goggin County, Lewiston and Auburn. As you know, we probably?
I'm sorry, what's your name?
As you know, we probably could serve a lot more kids if we had, you know, the staffing to do so. Pre-COVID, we had about 60 kids that attended the Auburn Boys and Girls Club. Right now, we're at about 120 in the Auburn Club and 60 in Lewiston. So the middle school and the high school are in Lewiston. Both Ever Little and AMS get bused and transported to Lewiston at the Armory. And because of staffing restraints and other issues that we're having, we're having difficulty increasing our enrollment. And one of the things that we do at the Boys and Girls Club also is we fight food insecurity. We have served 160 some odd kids at the Boys and Girls Club hot meals, and that has, you know, grown exponentially as, you know, post-COVID. So when we're trying to, you know, increase programs, whether it's, you know, the Michael Phelps Swim Program or, you know, the summer school program, you know, expenses are, you know, increasing and revenue is not.
Gary, would you give your full name and where your place is?
My name is Gary Violet. I live at 151 Townsend Brook Road, Auburn.
Say hey you.
Okay, Councilor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you talk about food insecurity and things, where are you now getting your food and what is your cost for food?
So most of the food we get is CACFP funded. We get it through Cisco, the Food Bank, Hannaford donations, things of that nature.
Is there anything that you're short on that these other agencies don't cover?
I'm not aware.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to ask for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed? None being. See you in the fall. Outstanding. Next up is, excuse me, open session. It's the last open session of the night. If there's anybody in the public that would like to speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda, please step up to the podium and give us your name and address. If you could, limit your comments to three minutes. None seeing, nobody's coming up. I am going to close open session. We're going to move on to reports, starting with the mayor's report. I just want to announce that we had the first meeting last week of the mayor's ad hoc committee on naming of facilities and infrastructure. Councilor Whiting, Councilor Moore, and thank you both very much for being there. It was constructive. And we're moving forward. The next meeting will be September 12th, and it'll be at 4 o'clock here in the community room. So September 12th at 4 o'clock. We'll have an agenda posted on our website. That's it for reports on my end. City council, is there any subcommittee reports that a city councillor wants to report on?[1724.91] City council, is there any subcommittee reports that a city councilor wants to report on, starting on the right? Down, down, down. Very good. Councilor Walker?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to throw a big thank you out there to the volunteers that worked with me this weekend with the balloon festival, the age-friendly had a booth over there, we sold approximately $2,800 worth of drinks, water, soda, and I definitely want to thank everybody that purchased the soda and drinks from us. The second thing is, we're also, meaning age-friendly, going to do a giveaway for the needy again, October 7th at the Auburn Library. If you have clothing that you would like to give to us to give away on that date, you can reach out to me anytime you want, 577-2694, and we can meet, and I will take that off from your hands, and it definitely will help somebody in need. The other thing, I want to thank Public Works Auburn for the work they did down at the fest, at the Anniversary Park in New Auburn. We are attempting to get our little tiny buildings down there hooked up with power and stuff, and they're working hard at trying to make that happen, and I would guess our electrician will be the next step, so we might as well thank him at this time for getting the power hooked to the buildings. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Nothing.
Okay, very good then. I'll close reports. We do have an executive session, that's the last item of the night, then we're going to adjourn straight from there with no action. Executive session is about a personnel matter, city manager evaluation pursuant to 1 MRSA 4056A. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Councilor Mills, second for Councilor Walker. All those in favor? Okay, we now stand in the executive session. Have a great night, thank you folks. Again, see you on September 5th at 5:30.